To the flag in the moment silence.
The flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll go ahead and recognize that we do have a full quorum this evening, so we are all in attendance. And we do not have any emergency additions to add to the agenda, so if I can get a motion for the approval of the agenda as is.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, any discussions on our agenda? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, and I am going to go ahead and open up our public hearing. We have a hearing this evening for public to talk on capital projects plan, our school bus replacement plan, and the 2026 budget that was advertised. So we'll take a moment for a hearing and is there anybody that needs to speak on anything on those we have? All right, we will go ahead and close and adjourn our public hearing. And move into our regular meeting. So we have, this is the time that audience can speak to the board on agenda items. We'll open it back up after the meeting for non-agenda items. And just a moment to make sure, okay, we got nobody signed up for talking with board. So we will go ahead and move into our routine matters. The one is the approval of the minutes to the regular meeting and work session. It'll sell on August 18th. And if I can get a motion for approving those minutes.
I'd like a motion to approve minutes of the regular meeting and work session of August 18th, 25.
Please go ahead a second. All right, any comments or discussion on the minutes? All right, all those in favor for approving the regular meeting and work session on August 18th of 25, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. B2, we have our vouchers and financial reports for the month. I can get a motion for those.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the vouchers and financial reports and accept those.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anything to add?
I didn't have anything to point out.
All right, and no further discussion. All those in favor for vouchers and financial reports, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And then our communications for September, we have some donations. BC had some donations. The auto shop had a 2005 Chevy Express donated. The cheerleading had 300 and negative lunch balances of 100 was donated for BC. Prairie had 275 to student activities and autunement. None for Autobin this month. And we have our fundraiser update C2 and just kind of highlight some of the fundraisers we have going on, coming up or going on. And I do, I do have a question on that one. I noticed that our elementary's fundraisers aren't on there. And I was wondering, did they?
Yeah, they send them to Bailey and then Bailey will put them on there once.
We were on there.
Fannie Mae's on there, yeah, for Autobin.
Okay, I didn't, I totally missed it because I was trying to see when Prairie's was doing their owes.
Now, so just to, to make sure that we're clear on when we get this, they, they color code the months.
Correct, yes.
So that's what I show each time.
Yes, so your, your red ones are just the new ones for this month, but the report is ongoing.
Correct, okay.
The ones that you've already seen in previous month are still the ones that you sent, but for you, just updating right here is just the new ones.
The new ones, okay. And we did, and we do have Autobin there, that was updated and added.
Okay, so that's those one there. So those are fundraisers. And then we will go on to C3 and Abby is here for the principal update for Autobin.
Sorry for my phone, made a few notes on it. So today, we started our win groups, which is what I need. And so those are for grades K through three. This is a time where our title department pulls out students, our special education department. And then we have three or four pairs into each grade level, so between the two classes, working at students' needs, their interventions, what they need. So those are off to start, this is new for Autobin, so we are excited to have all the pair of support to help with that. Then we have a CKLA curriculum. Many grade levels have finished their first unit. They're still adjusting to the rigor of the curriculum and they may not get, a lot of feedback I'm hearing is they're not getting everything in. And so I've just been telling them sometimes slow and steady wins the race. So instead of trying to fly through and get everything, at least get what you're presenting to the students, their understanding and mastering. But we've also received a few parent comments on the various aspects of it, especially when it comes to the vocabulary that the students are learning, how they're using it at home. So that was a great feedback from them. This week is also safety week at Autobin, so we are doing various safety drills this week while working with local law enforcement and emergency responders. So we sent out a generic letter to parents, letting them know if they see emergency vehicles, that's what it is. Did not tell them what drills or what day or time for obvious safety reasons, but we started that this week. Tomorrow, we are starting grade level meetings. This is going to be during the teacher's prep time, just to review data, but also get feedback from teachers on what is going well and what they need help with. So that'll be interesting tomorrow, what feedback we get. Last week, I started lunch with the principal. Each class has a week this first semester where students from their class get to come eat lunch with me in the office, just working on, A, getting to know them, building that positive relationship. So I should have lunch with all 268 students before Christmas time, so. Last week, on Friday, we had grandparents stay at Autobin. The kindergarten teachers and the students worked really hard at getting the grandparents in. Every student had a grandparent figure or someone, a grand buddy, as they call, come in for the little program refreshments and then seeing the classrooms. And I know the grandparents really enjoyed the effort the teachers put in for that. We kind of touched on fundraiser. We did kick off our Fannie Mae fundraiser last Thursday. But to be completely honest, the prices have increased, so that's something moving forward. We will probably look at other alternatives just from pricing standpoint. And again, it's kind of out of their control too, but. Our positive videos here this month, we're going to be creating a positive video to push out to our school community. And we are going to be hearing from students, parents, and hopefully some staff on what they like best about Autobin, why they have Red Devil pride or something they learned. That is going to be K3. So I sent out a survey to the K3 parents and asked if they would like to be filmed in it or if their child could be. So I've gotten some feedback. Do you have a handful of parents willing to give a little statement and then some students as well? Something we've kind of been working on with the school resource officer, sheriff, and the law enforcement is our drop off and pick up safety. Last Thursday, I went to the town board to introduce myself, but to also share some safety concerns with them. Out of that meeting was a great positive in the fact that they are going to advertise in their town newsletter for anyone that would like to volunteer to help be cross guards around the, you know, especially those areas that are affected by the busing. You know, they're, do a background check and just volunteer. So I think I got a couple already on there, so hopefully more will reach out. So it was an exciting, community-based thing. But with that, we are trying to get on North Clubia Street, a no parking zone from 2:30 to 3:30. That's going to be the side kind of our road trucking and the second grade doors, staff parking lot. So that's going to be presented again to the town board next week and then advertised in the paper since it will involve an ordinance change. Worked with Sheriff, or not Sheriff, Pritchett today to kind of solidify some of that. What we're having is some students getting dismissed out those doors because their parents are waiting over there instead of using our car rider line. So trying to make sure we just safely know where all 268 students go. You know, we have traffic buses pulling in, we have staff members who walk out at different times going, that is just a kind of a congested area, that's safety. So kind of speaking on car rider line, we have discussed having two car rider lines at one point with having more car riders with the busing in the town. However, we have gotten it down to be between eight to 10 minutes that we get all the car riders out the door and gone. So we really want to get those outs before our buses are dismissed, so we don't have to call buses back. So we are not going to go with two as of now, especially with working with the town, there's some town roads in congestion. We did talk about taking away that staff parking there by the kindergarten side and using two car rider lines. But then when you get up, you have the chaos of, well, who's going left, who's going right, why I needed to go left. So we're just going to, I think, stick with where we're at right now. We are going to release car riders about five minutes earlier. So that way, the car riders and the parents are out before our walkers get dismissed. And then lastly, we had our big walkthrough today. We are looking forward to getting the project started. I think it's going to be a great addition, what we need, but also being very modest in our choices of utilizing our space. So we appreciate you guys' input on that.
Thank you. And Edie's here for curriculum update.
As we've talked about before, our focus this year is strengthening instruction by using great strategies and the use of high-quality curricular materials. And so we've worked hard these first, we're at midterm nine 11, right? So halfway through our first nine weeks, we've worked diligently to put our materials in place and to get the teachers up and running in their rooms. As Abby said, teachers are implementing ELA 7 through 12 and a reading, new reading program, K through 6. And this focuses on foundational skills, so we will know the phonics or the I read test, but also there's a big knowledge component. And so if you drop into one of the classrooms, you may see things such as third graders with students forming inferences, planning as they prepare to write structured persuasive essays. The ones I dropped in on were writing about the irresponsibility of the character Mr. Toad. But they were putting together their structure and getting ready to debate. Second graders celebrating a tall tales unit with paltine pancakes. That was a fun celebration at Prairie Crossing. First graders working on listening comprehension and learning about fables. And eighth graders reading The Telltale Heart and learning figurative language devices, which they'll apply in their own narrative writings. And I did have a quote from a teacher who has a child in our school. She said, "It is definitely a shift in how we have taught, but the kids are doing well. My own child came home the other day telling me all about shepherds, fables, and nonfiction. I was impressed that she was able to explain those things as a first grader and just a couple of weeks in. She's been eager to tell me what she has learned." And that is one of the great components of CKLA, the knowledge base. So we're hearing lots of things about that. Teachers, related to curriculum and instruction also, teachers and administrators are meeting to review data together and to plan for interventions, really focused in reading and in math. And for our PD, I told you last month about some of the upcoming PD we have on Monday. We'll have Dr. Lori here for our whole corporation as we turn and our focus on relationships, understanding that we want to continue to build and establish those before we're turning to our rigorous instruction. And then we have our full day e-learning in October and another e-learning to our delay in November. And that one will be more when, what I need, right? So with teachers working in groups, working on mapping, collaborating, and we'll have more data to use then at that point. For compliance with assessments coming up in September, we'll be completing the NWEA and then we'll be preparing for the upcoming I-Learn checkpoint number one, which will be October 6th. But this year, it's new that we are rostering. I can't remember if I told you about that last month. This is different than what we've done before in that TIDE is the system that IDOE uses. And so as soon as the third graders sit down and take the test, it's sent away. And then within 24 hours, the results are available. The teachers this year will have a roster of their own students. They'll be able to go into TIDE and right away see the results and have a detailed report about what those students are doing well and maybe what are some things that we could work on with those students. So that's great for guiding instruction. Also, also new for the IDOE is the parent access portal. So not only will the teachers be able to go on and see that report, but the parents, we will have communicated their own unique code for each student that they have. And they'll be able to log on and go in and in real time also have a parent report that says a lot of the same things. Because we, and we're excited because, you know, it's really all hands on deck. So when the parent gets the report that says, here's some things your student's doing well, here's some things you could do to help your student as they're growing in this area, those are great things for us, so. Regarding relationships also, we did have our first conscious discipline coaching session this afternoon at 3:30 with Katie Ahrens, and there were 16 staff members in attendance. There'll be another one on Thursday morning, so if people couldn't do the afternoon, they can do the morning. If they attend one each month, they do get some things from the grant, some tools for their classroom. And there was, on that coaching session, there was a comment in the chat comments from a teacher that said, "I've been incorporating," this is a high school teacher, "I've been incorporating the teaching of brain states within my class since the beginning of the year. Each day, we've been doing a unifying activity and a brain start smart activity, including breathing exercises. After the routine was established, one student asked to do it again, and on another day, another said it was their favorite part of the day." So, yeah, so it's a positive to some of those efforts that we're making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a couple of things. The conscious discipline that you just spoke about was part of the grant. And that is for the willing, so that's a voluntary thing, and we're glad to have teachers participating. And then with the new CKLA and the new science of reading, I'm hearing the same things. I'm hearing, you know, this is, this is new, this is a challenge, but in the last week or two, I've heard exactly what you're saying, that. It's, it's starting to make sense and so I, I think we're on the right track.
We have C5, our 26, 27 school year calendar. We don't have the 27, 28, like the slide says here. We're just looking at the 26, 27. This is just for our first three communications. Was there somebody from the committee that?
Yeah, we have, and this is the time, because it is just a proposed draft. So we have Katie and Monica both who were at that meeting. I was at the meeting. If you have the proposed part here, and so now is the time to talk out loud or to ask if you have questions. But it does, the proposed school calendar starts a week earlier. The major, the main reason for that is we found ourselves this year in one of the later ones. So it seems like most of the schools shifted back to that timeframe. It does include a fall, a fall break of five days. Many of the neighboring schools do the five days. It does make scheduling easier for the families. It adds two extra snow days involved, so they're kind of built in. And if we don't need those, then they are just days off for, for the families and for the teachers.
So the snow days, are they no lea, or e-learning, they're just flat snow days?
Correct. Now, you only get three e-learning days. So once we use those, we're, we're out of them and we have built-in days. So if, if we don't need to use those built-in days, they will be days off.
So we'll use e-learning first.
E-learning first, and you only get three.
So five essential possible snow days that would not have to be made up at the end of the year.
Correct, yeah. We did keep the six two-hour delay mornings for professional development. We surveyed the staff, if you remember, about whether to use e-learning. And I, I think what the issue was is while the extra time was good, it was a lot of time. And then you still had to do e-learning responsibilities, and it seemed to be kind of a bit chaotic. And so we just felt like the two-hour delays, we, we could make good use of time. So that's why you don't see any e-learning for professional development in here. They would all be for inclement weather. And then we did think that this mirrored some of the neighboring schools, and that's important, especially if we are in the co-op with them, whether that's the special ed co-op or the vocational. I mean, it's not imperative, but it does make things a little easier. And it still ends before Memorial Day if we do not have to make up. So it's a proposed calendar, and please weigh in or ask questions if you have them. We try to answer them. Or if you don't have them tonight, you know, we still have another month, but I, we would like to have something approved at the next board meeting if we can, because it's helpful to families.
Instead of like a week for October break, is it, does it make it sense to, and I'm, I want info from you two because you went to C, doesn't Seager, don't they take two weeks off for spring break in the?
They do spring weeks, but they also do a week for fall break too.
The fall, I think one of them is e-learning, or the snow makeup week too, because they don't always have it.
Now, from an academic point of view, two weeks at spring break, to me, is detrimental to the I-Learn because it's, it, two weeks is a long time to retain things.
So my sister's a teacher there, and I would say they're not, they don't love the two weeks because it is so long. So that's, yeah.
It's probably great for families, but instructionally, it's probably the.
Even families, still, yeah, some families, it gets very difficult for two weeks off of work, and they're going to find somewhere for their kids, so.
Right, okay.
And I don't think many of our neighboring schools, except maybe Seager, not many had two weeks spring break.
Correct, Seager is the only one.
Seager's the only one.
But everyone had a week at fall.
Everyone, all the other.
Now that, yeah, not last year's the first year all of them did it, right?
Yeah.
What was the reasoning for adding January 4th onto the Christmas break, two weeks?
We were trying to balance the semesters.
That's what I was going to say, what days are A-Day and Monday?
There wasn't really any days to add in the fall, so then we thought, okay, well, we have time to move. And so just to make sure that we get the 180 and we don't have to. I think it isn't at the end, we, we only go like the Tuesday and the Wednesday, or the Monday and the Tuesday at that very last weekend.
You go, yeah, you go the Monday and Tuesday, and then the kids go back on the sixth.
So if we didn't have that extra day in January, then for finals, we have to have Thursday, Friday, and Monday finals. And we didn't really feel like people like coming back to school for just a Monday at the end of the year. So that, that was kind of the reasoning there was for the, from the secondary perspective, have at least two days of finals that week if you don't have to make any more days up.
I know your, both your nine weeks are identical in the second semester at 46 days. But if I were still in the classroom, I would rather have that extra day, that January 4th, tucked down there in the end of April somewhere to break up the insanity in the spring.
I agree.
There you go.
You've got, you've got your February set up as a, as a flex day on a Friday, and then Monday is President's Day. So you could essentially do the same thing with your flex day in April. Friday, April 23rd would be a flex day, and then Monday, April 26th would be that January 4th scheduled day. So if you didn't have snow days, you'd essentially have a four-day weekend in April when everybody's going nuts anyway.
I think, yeah, I think maybe the only reason why we wanted to do that is because of testing calendars.
I'm sure testing is, yeah.
April's big for AP.
AP is getting ready, because the first weekend of May is AP testing, so, I mean, yeah.
Could that be something you look at, just to see if?
I made note of it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a note of that, yeah.
Because that's, it's a big stretch.
Could you take one day out of the fall break and put it on that Friday before spring break, and I'm just throwing that out? I really am. I mean, how many people, how many teachers want to leave one day early because they're?
When I take that dump.
They won't matter.
If you do a Friday, they'll take one Thursday.
Well, essentially.
I agree with you, they will, they'll, they'll have that one Thursday.
You could do that with that January 4th date as well. Instead of moving into April, you could move that to March.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, that's something I hear constantly is that Friday. And again, some people just leave that Friday. But.
Some people leave Wednesday.
So now, so now you want to move two days from there.
You're not going to solve the problem. No, but I, I appreciate the calendar. It looks great, really.
Looks good.
August.
I do, I do know that that seemed early, and that's why we kind of pushed that midweek to try to maybe offset.
I think that's where we'll hear most feedback is starting from the parents. I mean, they will, they're, oh my god.
But yeah, like you said though, if you get those extra days in the fall, it just does push it back up that day. And you want to be out before Memorial Day, or do you want to go into June, and you hear all the, all of that, nobody wants to go June.
And I wasn't sure if it would affect the moratorium that they do for sports, because it's usually runs, like say that week before. But that means it would get pushed up, or if it would just literally be.
The week before what?
What we're trying to do.
It's usually last week in July.
Yeah, last week in July.
So I didn't know if that meant.
That's the PC one, right, that I just said. Okay, so I want to make a note.
But then they get out.
But yeah, I think, I think we had some, we had some events that like girls golf, I think, had to compete before we even started. And before, because other schools were in session and we weren't yet, so they were. Yeah, I think there was a couple, yeah, a couple things that went happen that year. This year, because of our schedules being a little bit long, so makes sense.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, and, and we can talk, I mean, we have a whole other month. What I'm hearing is check on the BC moratorium for that early start. We're looking at the fourth on, you know, we, do we strategically place that someplace else? Other than that, I, I didn't hear anything else to really look at, unless, and no, we have the whole month. You may have an epiphany, or we may too, and so we just need to share that so we can communicate.
And, and this calendar's out there for anybody to look at?
No, not yet, not approved, not yet.
That, we don't.
We don't need the, we don't need the.
Cassie Zellman did mention that she and Zach at Central had a lot of students gone for the state fair.
And that will, that will really, that first week, big time. And there's more and more kids doing that, actually.
But some of that is part of those new.
It could, yes, yes, I mean.
Possibly.
Right, right.
That's hard to start a school year, and that's your first.
I don't, no matter what we choose to, especially the start, it, it's going to be a, a mix because most schools start earlier, but then if we start mid, are we balancing it? We'll continue to weigh the options.
Yeah, but even if we started this week, we did, we started the, like, the 11th, the 13th, like, this year, right? It was like a week later, we still had some of that, so.
We just don't have any built-in days this year.
Yeah.
So this is the advantage to this calendar. We, we build in those flex days. Okay, so you good with us still clocking this over?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Then we have C6 is our projects update. Do we have anyone, are you covering that?
Just, just, I just want to give a quick one. The track project is almost done. They finished striping, well, they are finishing striping and the lane numbers and the exchange zones. It looks really good. We are finalizing the construction documents to prepare for bids for the Autobin Elementary gym floor, the Autobin Elementary School dining room space, and the athletic storage annex building, and the pool decommunification unit. And tomorrow, we do have a call with Lantern and Tecton to make sure those documents are accurate and ready. And Abby had a walkthrough, a pre, pre-bid walkthrough with Tecton today and some people who are interested in bidding. We are preparing for the sale of the bonds. Tracy and I have meetings scheduled this week. And just to make sure that everybody knows that there were capital projects over the summertime that were noteworthy. The BC canopy was done.
That was needed.
Yes.
Yes, it was broken down.
Yeah, and, and thank you to Tecton who stayed on. We had, we had to have them come back, the company, and make sure it was all sealed correctly. And they were very good about getting that back out here. We had some carpet replacements in all of the buildings. They look nice, and then painting. So all of that stuff happens all the time. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of the projects that are going on or that have occurred.
Just to clarify, the canopy at BC is the school bus where they drop off.
Yes, yes, right, it was leaking and, and, yeah, yes.
I've heard a lot of good comments too about the track and everything out there, it looks.
Yeah, it does look nice.
I saw it firsthand. I'm ready to run it.
I'll watch it.
We'll cheer you on.
I won't run and run, I'll go. I do like the exchange lanes though, that's, that's, that's awesome. I, I hadn't seen that in a long time.
Yeah, that looks nice. And we, and we have hosted sectional before, so this will be good for us to, to do that. And the fencing, I think Cory and Jared really wanted that fencing in order to help with the supervision and the safety.
Great too.
And visitors coming about the sidewalk, how much they enjoyed that.
And they sold out of pork burgers Friday.
There we go. Everything's going well a bit.
Okay, so, um, if anybody out there wants to leave, we're going into the main, um, new business stuff. So now's the time if you're meaning to scoot out, feel free. If not, we'll continue on with our, um, new business. So E one is our consideration for the staff report and other personnel items. If I can get a motion for approving that.
I'll make a motion to consider the normal staff report items.
Okay, any discussions? All right, all those in favor for approving the, um, staff report and other personnel items, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Faces out there. Okay, and then we have E two is the approval of the field trips from FFA to SOAR camp in Trafalgar in Indiana, October third through the fifth, and FFA to the National Convention in Indy on October twenty ninth through the thirty first. And FFA to the fire camp in Trafalgar, Indiana, November twenty first to the twenty third. So several field trips, if I can get a motion for those.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the field trips, FFA to SOAR in, in, in October, FFA to National Convention in Indy at the end of October, and FFA to fire camp in Trafalgar in November.
I'll second.
I just got it. All right, any, um, discussions on field trips? All right, all those in favor for approving the field trip requests for FFA and, um, SOAR and fire camp and the National Convention, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Excited for the experience the students get in those. E three is consideration for the approval of the resolution to adopt the twenty six capital projects plan.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the resolution to adopt the twenty, twenty six capital projects plan.
I'll second.
Any discussions, questions, comments on that? All right, all those in favor for approving the resolution to adopt the twenty six, uh, twenty twenty six capital projects plan, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And we have the approval of the resolution to adopt the twenty six bus replacement plan. These were our hearings prior to our meeting. If I can get a motion for the bus replacement plan.
I'll make a motion to approve or consider the approval, uh, of the adoption of the twenty twenty six bus replacement plan.
I'll second.
Okay, questions, comments, discussions? All right, all those in favor for approving the, um, the adoption of the twenty six bus replacement plan, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And E five is the consideration for the approval of the NEOLAs special update, uh, that came across. We got first reading last month and, uh, now we're on the approval of those. Any motion on that?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the NEOLAS special update.
I'll second. E two, and did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, we talked last month and spent enough, got the review draft.
Okay, and all those in favor for approving the NEOLAS special, um, updates, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same as I. They're on our screen there to per view. And our E six is the consideration to approve the appointment of Mariah Kerber and Allison Benner to the Otterman Public Library Board. That'll begin January first of twenty six.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of appointing, uh, Maria Kerber and Allison Benner to the Otterman Public Library Board beginning January first, twenty twenty six through December thirty first of twenty thirty.
I'll second. Discussion at all? All right, and all those in favor for approving the appointment of, um, is it Maria or Mariah? I might have said it wrong, so anyone know, say it's right. Mariah Kerber and Allison Benner to the Otterman Public Library Board. That'll be effective January one through December thirty first of twenty thirty. Please say aye. Aye, opposed, same as I. And, um, lastly, we have E seven and that is the consideration to approve the job description for the elementary D and S students.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the job description for the elementary D and S students. I'll second.
Yeah. This, we have a D and S students at Prairie Crossing now. But if you recall, I believe it was last year or two years ago, we updated all of our job descriptions. And we indicated that if we have a new position, that we would create that job description or if we need to update. And so we just want to make sure that we have a description on file here that's accurate. So that's what we're doing now is making sure that we have that.
Yeah. I just changed that revise to the bottom.
All those in favor for approving the job description for the, um, elementary D and S students, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same as I. All right, listen carries and we are, um, now at the end of the meeting. This is the time for public comments for non-adjudicated items, which we didn't have anybody signed up. So, um, board or superintendent, do you have any additional comments? I know, I'll share. Little board members, anything? Okay. All right, we will go ahead and adjourn this evening. Thank you.
I got one on my, thanks.
I can take a picture of you. Hey, thank you, kind sir.
No problem.